Being paid forty dollars and getting that receipt of payment within days of them registering a ballot at the Board of Elections, if you looked at the Board of Elections absentee ballot charts. So there was a very close causal connection upon my examination between getting paid and voting by mail under the guise of being a volunteer, and I saw no volunteers for that campaign on Election Day. So that's the problem I have is the fraudulent or possibly fraudulent nature of the vote by mail operation. Thank you.
David Mello.
As a social studies teacher, I often have to inform my students about tools that began with very good intents but that have been misused throughout history. Locally, we see that happening with the vote by mail. It is a very good thing to let busy professionals who might not be able to get to the polls, seniors who maybe are too disabled to get to the polls, people who are away for college to be able to use vote by mail. But I'm sorry, I hear too many tales, too many instances from my constituents about people that are handed large sums of money to collect votes and then they in turn distribute some of that money to people that they are collecting votes from. I hear too many tales and instances of people being told, "You should only turn in your vote by mail and you will only get a payment for your vote by mail if you leave it unopened so it can be viewed." That is against the law. That is a blatant violation of the law that is going on across all four corners of our city. It cannot be tolerated. It is something that has manipulated elections in this city for decades and we need to put a stop to it. I commend people on the opposing slate have brought this, some of their supporters have brought this to the attention of the City Council. I commend them for doing that. I've referred them to different clinics at the law school that I went to, Rutgers School of Law in Newark. I hope they will take advantage of those sort of opportunities and other resources that could try to get rid of this fraud and law breaking that is rampant throughout the city of Hoboken involving vote by mail.
Jim Jordan.
I fully support the ability of people to vote by mail. It increases the number of people who are able to exercise their franchise. It makes perfect sense to make it easier for everyone, whether, just like moving the elections to one day in November, I think increased participation as well. Obviously, I'm offended by any criminal activity with regard to the allegations that have been discussed so far, but as far as throwing the baby out with the bathwater, I think vote by mail is an important way for people to participate and I wouldn't by any means suggest that we should end that.
Laura Miani.
I do support vote by mail. I do think it is a good choice for people who are either traveling or who have difficulty getting to the polls. I think that we should do everything possible to make sure that people are able to cast their vote. But I too, in working around the city and meeting people, have heard many allegations of fraud related to vote by mail and I think that that's what needs to be addressed. And I hope that going forward, we can come up with policies that enable people to vote freely but get rid of the potential for fraud. Thank you.
Joe Mindet.
Obviously, I support vote by mail. I have friends that aren't going to be in town, they need to vote and that's the way to do it, seniors and such, but it's baffling to me that it goes on, it blatantly goes on in this town and that nothing's been done about it. You have a Board of Elections, you have a City Council and you have ways to look at this and set up a task force or get people out there to catch what's going on with this and that it's going on rampantly and blatantly in town. I've heard plenty of, as Dave was saying, plenty of people that have complained that they're getting paid to vote by mail and I'm not sure why, nothing's been done, but I'm sure there's things that we could do to put in place to catch what's going on and have ways to stop it, so.
Frank Rambler.
I definitely support vote by mail. I'll tell you why. Right now, what you have is this, ever since they've moved everything to November election, you have senior citizens who can't even read half of the ballot, who need assistance, who want to vote ordinarily wouldn't vote, or if they went into a vote, into a booth and to vote, they wouldn't even know what they're voting on. We got, right now, we got a governor's race, we got a senator's race, we got an assemblyman's race, we got a mayor race, we got a council at large race, we got a Board of Education race, we got a veterans question, we have a rent control question, we have a minimum wage question. Nobody's going to go in that booth and vote on everything and you're going to see in November, November 5th, the big drop off because people are not understanding that there's so much on the ballot. We have uneducated voters who can't even read, who need assistance, and that's another way to help people. Vote. Get the vote out.
All right, any rebuttals on this? Well, I saw Patricia's hand first.
I didn't, I didn't answer.
Oh, sorry.
Vote by mails, I'm in support of vote by mails. We want to have increased voter participation. What I'm not in support of is obviously paid vote by mails, that is completely illegal. My parents, they left their country seeking their freedom of speech and to me, that is the most coveted of all our laws, your right to vote. That should never be compromised, it should never be something that is paid for. The other thing, I think part of the question, Bob, you mentioned, was also just about good governance and reform. I think in terms of pay to play laws, I think pay to play laws are good, but it seems that what the current administration has done is they've eviscerated the pay to play laws because of some violations that they have had on their ELEC reports and not just that slate, but as well as the occupancy slate as well. We have, we hold ourselves, or should hold ourselves, to the highest ethical standards. And my job, we're, I'm in one of the most highly regulated industries in the country and even putting that aside, it's something that's been taught in me by my parents, is to hold myself to the highest standard and to hold myself to the best practices out there.
Now, the question, any rebuttals, and again, I see Patricia first, go ahead.
I'm quite sure the person that asked those questions about vote by mail did not intend to say the senior citizens, the disabled, simply, we don't need a rocket scientist. Vote by mail is free, it don't cost money. Okay, so let's not beat around the bush because the past administration is no better because allowing the ticket costs a dollar, but it's money. So it happened in the last past administration when the mayor became the councilwoman for the fourth ward. It should not be done. Vote by mail is free, that's the message. Thank you.
All right, seeing no hands, moving on to the next question. I have three here I've gathered and it's about money, everybody. Would you support, number one, would you support returning the budget surplus back to the taxpayers or holding it in reserve as a rainy day fund? Two, Zimmer campaign literature indicates that her administration will hold the line regarding property taxes. This position is not aggressive enough. What is your plan to reduce our bloated local government? Three, do you support routine line item budget transfers at year end? We'll begin with David Mello.
Well, first thing I want to say is I'm actually extremely proud of the fact that I was part of a team that brought considerable tax relief to this city. This chart that was published in the Star Ledger about at the end of 2011 shows that in the county of Hudson, we brought seventeen percent in that year alone of tax relief to our municipal tax bill. Almost every other municipality in Hudson County, it went up. There was one that I believe went down by seven percent. We decreased by seventeen percent. We have brought real tax relief to the city of Hoboken. Not only that, we've done it by avoiding selling our assets, our valuable assets, things like the municipal garage, in order to fill budget gaps rather than do it by coming to terms of agreement with all of our unions, which this administration's done, this team has done, for the first time in anybody's recent memory, has happened in the city of Hoboken. As a member of a union that's working without a contract, I am so proud of that accomplishment. And when it comes to the surplus, if the surplus gets to a point where it is beyond a few percentage points, where it will help our credit rating, our ability to borrow money at a reasonable rate of interest, then certainly it will be returned to the taxpayer. But like any household knows, that they have a bit of a savings account so that they can weather the storm if anything goes wrong financially, we do need to have a small and reasonable surplus. That's the only thing we've advocated for and I will continue to advocate that for that and all of the other sound budget principles and policies that we brought to this city for four years. Thank you.
Joe Mindet.
I believe that the surplus should stay in and for a rainy day fund. You never know what could happen. We had Sandy happen, you know, in 2008, 2009, a lot of us business owners saw what happened there and were laying people off left and right and wished we would have had a rainy day fund to keep those people that were having their first child or having their third child and unfortunately, without a rainy day fund, it's hard to do that and you never know what's going to happen. And eventually, if we do hit a surplus at a cap and we put that into budget, we can eventually start lowering taxes, but you need to get that surplus to a certain point before you do that. A budget is the backbone of any business and of any municipality, so you need that money in there to make sure that you always have that money in there. So, once we get to a certain surplus, yes, we can start to decrease taxes, but until we get there, we've got to keep it and hold the line. Thank you.
Peter Biancomano.
We should absolutely have a rainy day fund, but at the same time, we should definitely use tax money to improve the quality of life, whether that's building new pumps to prevent future flooding such as Hurricane Sandy, whether that's repaving our roads, whether that's fixing our streetlights or anything else that'll improve the quality of life in this town, or creating more parking for, on city lots, for our residents and small businesses to create more business. So we should definitely use any taxpayer funds to improve quality of life in terms of flooding, parking and fixing any other issues. Thank you.
Jim Jordan.
I think it's foolhardy to not have a budget surplus of an adequate percent and the state agrees with us when they review our budget every year and we're actually below the top of the level that's recommended, so I'm a hundred percent in favor of retaining the surplus. The routine line item transfers at the end of your year, if you've estimated X for a certain activity and you have a little leftover, that's why it's called routine because it's done in every municipality in the state and that's, I'm fully in favor of using the money in something else that has been unexpectedly overspent if you have a little leftover from another. As far as reducing taxes, you know, this administration has reduced taxes twelve percent in the last four years and that includes inheriting some problems, including the $4.2 million salary situation which had to be paid, which was not anticipated. The notion that some hold that we develop our way out of our high taxes has been proven not to be the case. We threw the, we got an eighty percent tax increase in 2007 after ten years of development, residential development, and if we avoid residential development, which doesn't pay for itself, it costs more than it costs, we will do much better. Thank you.
Frank Rambler.
I'm listening to all of this here and to me, it's mind boggling. First of all, we got a Board of Education budget that's $64 million for 2,000 kids. It's unheard of. It's the highest in the state of New Jersey. That question I ask everybody here, do you know what your Board of Education budget is? It's $64 million.
No responses. Excuse me, no responses from the audience. Go ahead, Frank.
They've been moving back and forth, different employees to offset the budget. We had the biggest increase right now of four and a quarter percent. It was supposed to be that the people had a chance to vote on it. The governor gave the, Hoboken, the only town that has 600 districts, a waiver for the, they're only supposed to go up to two percent without a vote and they gave them a waiver not for us to vote on the budget. So that's one. Two, the first thing I would do with the surplus money is to go and put the three pumps. Right now, I'm telling you, I sit as the chairman of the North Hudson Sewer Authority, Sandy could come back and the longer you wait, the more it's going to cost. For instance, when we made up all the plans for the four pumps, the pump that we built, we built it, the North Hudson Sewer Authority, no help from anybody else, we built it, it was eighteen million, the city was supposed to be three, build the other three, it was six million apiece. Right now, they're nine million apiece. So every day you wait, we're going to be in serious trouble if it happens again. You've got to keep the people safe.
Next, Brittany Montgomery Cook.
Thank you. I'm a young professional and I have to live on a budget and if I have an emergency, I need to use my savings and the city budget should exist the same way. I do believe, I can't get into specifics whether I raise or lower taxes until I really got in there and got to see things, but I would promise to reinvest money in the infrastructure of the city to improve the quality of life for everyone in Hoboken.
Patricia Waiters.
I'm going to answer both the budget you said and also the surplus. I said in the meetings, two and three in the morning again, and I'm with the surplus, but none of this used as a big credit card. And as far as the budget goes, to amend the budget after you said you passed it, that's another tactic just to trick the residents of Hoboken. I'm saying a $64 million budget and we didn't even have an opportunity to vote on it. I agree with Frank Rambler because they bullied their way to move the election, took out our right to vote. So when you start talking about numbers and the budget, the budget is inaccurate. There's no such thing as we save taxes, we eliminated people from getting an increase. The EVAD people are still here knocking on doors, surprise, you'll be getting hit with an increase, trust me. And as far as the surplus though, to say you're going to save it for a rainy day, what about all the CBG grants and all the other funds that came into Hoboken? After that stormy day, which was a tremendous storm, Hurricane Sandy, after that, all I see on the agenda is bond, 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 and the first thing they say, oh, because look at our numbers with the surplus. So they're not being honest to the people. We need more transparency and some of you need to come out and get involved and sit in the meeting at night and watch the circus come on and look at this real joke when they sit here and try to impress you at a late, at campaign time, at election time with their false campaign promises. Thank you. Documentation online.
Eduardo Gonzalez.
Sure, the budget affects everything that Hoboken can do. As a resident, a taxpayer, a homeowner, I feel that we're not getting what we're paying for. The city could definitely do more with less. On all the boards that I've served, I've always been the finance chair, the treasurer, and at work, what I do is I manage millions of dollars and I'm able to allocate resources accordingly. Our current budget right now is full of gimmickry. If you look at that rainy day fund, it was never used properly. Most of the Hurricane Sandy costs were bonded for and the current rainy day was used to plug holes in the budget. If you look at the first line item on the budget, it's taking it from the surplus and without that, it's hiding basically a nineteen percent tax increase for all the residents of Hoboken. If you look at ever since the mayor and her council allies took control of City Hall, the business administrator's line item has increased over thirty-two percent. The mayor's line items have increased twenty-six. Finance department's been over a hundred sixty-six percent. The legal costs have ballooned over two hundred percent. So how have they done this? Well, what they've done is they've cut the senior budget by twenty-three percent, they've cut parks by forty-three percent, recreation and cultural affairs have dropped by thirty-three percent, and another way that they've been doing it is they've increased revenues from boots and toes almost fifty percent from one year to the next. I don't think that we should be nickel and diming the residents of Hoboken. I want to make sure that we ensure our financial security.
Robbie Baugh.
One of the first things that you're always asked as a candidate is, why did you run for office? And I'm asked that question all the time, as I'm sure many others are asked, and the reason I ran for office four years ago was because I saw the mismanagement firsthand of the City Council back in 2008, which led to a state takeover of our fiscal affairs because we underfunded a budget by over $10 million, which resulted in a tax increase of about forty-seven percent of the overall portion of your taxes. It was at that point in time that my wife and I said, listen, we can just sit here on sidelines or complain, but we could actually do something about it and get involved. And that, that really disturbed a tax increase is what compelled me to try to actually get involved in politics and in our community and do something about it. And the facts are this, we have done something about it. Councilman Mello pointed out to the Star Ledger, we've had approximately twelve percent decrease in taxes over four years. No other municipality in New Jersey can state that during these times and we did it without gimmicks and we did it while maintaining services and for the first time in years, we have all six unions with fair union agreements, contracts that are fair to both employees and taxpayers. So I'm proud of our accomplishments these four years. Thank you.
Laura Miani.
Thank you. In terms of answering the actual question about having a surplus and a rainy day fund, I do think that we do need to have some sort of a surplus maintained for a rainy day fund. I do think also though, that we need to watch where we've been spending our money. As Eduardo pointed out, you know, we did have a very large tax increase several years ago when the state took us over. We have not really seen that completely roll back to us. What we have seen is money being spent on legal, or rather, revenues from legal and you know, we're seeing more money spent there, legal parking, all of those areas, and we'd like to actually really look at the budget and see how we can do better in those areas. Thank you.
Okay, I believe that's ten this time, any, we have a rebuttal, okay? Eduardo Gonzalez.
Sure. They mentioned the Star Ledger and the taxes. The reason that happened is because of that huge tax increase from over four years ago. All the residents of Hoboken were overtaxed and the surplus was large, but when you look at the, how we increase our bond rating and how we make our bond rating better, it's not just by having a surplus, it's actually by having a policy for that surplus and again, not using it to plug holes in the budget. They mentioned the union. When you look at what they encumbered, they didn't encumber properly on the budget for all the union, or the salary adjustments. And then in terms of the state takeover, if you look at the deferred charges on the budget, which is all the way at the end on page thirty-eight of the budget, the last time that the deferred charges were that large was when the state came in and took the city's finances over. So again, I believe that what's happened currently with the administration and her council allies is just a bunch of smoke and mirrors.
Anything else? All right, so we're roughly at the halfway point. I just wanted to ask, are you guys having fun? Everyone having fun up here? Who's having the most fun? Raise your hand if you're, Patricia was first on that, okay. So, these are some personal questions we have for the group, so I thought lighten things up a bit. They're not all that light, anyway. When did you move to Hoboken? How long have you been a registered voter in Hoboken? Related question, I guess. What motivated you to run? Already referred to by Mr. Baugh before. How many city council meetings have you attended? We'll begin with Eduardo Gonzalez.
I moved to Hoboken six years ago and when I moved to Hoboken, I realized that this was the place that I wanted to stay and I wanted to raise my family. My wife and I, as I mentioned, we have two beautiful kids and in terms of the, was it how many city council meetings have you been to? I can't recollect how many I've been to in the time I've been here, but I've definitely been to numerous city council meetings. And then the other question was, oh, why am I running? Well, the reason I'm running is again, the way I was raised. I was born in New Jersey and my parents always instilled in me a sense of community give back. I remember as a little kid, my mother being out there with the teachers when they were on strike and trying to get a fair wage for the teachers. I remember the same for my father, always fighting for human rights and for equality and I always saw this as a little kid and it's something that was just instilled in me to make sure that I give back to our community. And again, even though I might have only been here six years, I call Hoboken my home and I'm definitely going to stay here, I'm planting my roots and I'm raising my family. Thank you.
Laura Miani.
I moved to Hoboken in nineteen ninety-
Microphone.
I moved to Hoboken in nineteen ninety-two. I think I've probably been registered since that point. What motivated me to run is really the kids. I have two children and you know, Sinatra Field went down in 2009. I've talked about this on several occasions. My son and kids of his age will never play on that field for their Hoboken teams because they're in high school. My daughter can't really remember that field being in operation, so I really want to make sure that that doesn't happen to other kids and that we are planning properly for our future. So that really is a key reason for me to run. In terms of council meetings, I'm trustee of Stevens and frequently, our board meetings happen at the same time as council meetings, so I watch them later on on TV and if there's something that feels important, like the 6000 Park vote several years ago, I went with my daughter and so that she could see what was going on as well. Thank you.
David Mello.
I moved to Hoboken on Labor Day weekend, it was sixteen years ago on Labor Day weekend, to an apartment about two blocks down the street on the corner of Ninth and Washington and I've lived in four different spots since then and really established a life. I met my wife on a night out in the city from, coming from Hoboken, convinced her to move here and fall in love with Hoboken as I had and then we became married and had two children, started a family. So it's with great passion that I've tried to make this community that is not only attractive to the twenty-something's that I was when I moved here, but is attractive to and feasible for those families that have started to root themselves here and want to stay here. They don't want to move to that train town out in the suburbs and they don't feel like there's a time clock ticking on their time in the city of Hoboken. As for coming to city council meetings, well, I've obviously been coming to them pretty much every meeting for the past four plus years, but I was coming to them before that because I was fighting for a park in the southwest part of Hoboken for a better redevelopment zone. And I'm very, very proud to say that two weeks ago, the mayor and I and a couple other people that work for the city hung this sign up outside of an initial cornerstone piece of the southwest park that we did successfully acquire because when we set out to do something, we make sure it gets done. And this is a starting point, it's not the end, but it's something that we got done and I'm proud we did. And when it comes to registering, believe it or not, you would be surprised, I think I registered soon after talking to a young Michael Russo about the need to register. That's a shock.
Brittany Montgomery Cook.
I moved to Hoboken eight years ago and registered to vote over a year ago. I've been to about, I've seen actually about a half a dozen to a dozen council meetings on TV and I want to run, I, I'm an educator, I have the patience of a saint, so I think sitting on council, that might become very useful. I want to give back. My family's been here for generations, this is where they started, this is my home now and I really want to be able to help people, that's who I am and that's what I want to do and this is where I want to stay for a very long time. I have friends now staying, having families, this is now becoming a place where you can very easily, or you have raised a family and I see myself staking raising a family, so I want to be part of making this place better.
Patricia Waiters.
How long have I been in Hoboken? My mother put my first pampers on in 468 Street, apartment 7A. She moved here in nineteen fifty-four. What inspired me to run? I got my feet wet in politics in 2006 and '07, worked in New Jersey City City Hall as the council aide to Ms. Willie Floyd, God bless her soul, she passed away, she was a county registered. I've seen so much corruption going on, Rick, please believe it or not, wouldn't believe it. It inspired me to say, I want to bring true integrity back in the name of Hudson County. It was sad when you traveled and went to my son's campus and I said I was from Hoboken, is that Hudson County? Yeah, my son said my mother's into politics, they said, oh my God, we got to watch her. I'm tired of people putting their defenses up when you approach them and say you want to be a politician. I don't want to be a politician, I'm a people's person, a public servant. I serve the people. I'm inspired to run because I attend every council meeting, zoning board meeting, planning board meeting, I'm missing a county right now, I go to Hudson County meetings, I go to West Milford with Governor Christie, I'm at every meeting because I want to educate myself both good and bad politics so I can constantly serve the people with integrity and finally make history in Hudson County. I'm an independent, I start out with empty pockets and I'm going to end with empty pockets. I don't have a motive to get rich, I have a motive to do great public service like I've been doing for six years. I'm proud to say I do it and I do it well. I'm here for all of you providing moral support. My free time is services to public service. Thank you.
No, no, please, no responses. Frank Rambler.
I was born and raised in Hoboken at 612 Grand Street, sixty-two years ago, July 10th. Hoboken has been great to me, okay? I came from a single mom with six kids, on welfare, proud to say that, but we had pride. I went out and worked and go to school at the same time to support my mother, fourteen years old. At that time, you got your working papers at fourteen. I made a dollar and a quarter a night, I was working in the textile factory. I had an opportunity that my boss gave me to go sell polyester doublets on the west coast and at a, at a commission rate of one percent and I did very well for myself. I guess one of my claims to fame, I say claim to fame is I met my mentor when I was sixteen, a guy named Sam Walton. I think a lot of people in this room know who he is, all right? I went down there as a kid with dungarees on and I said, I wanted to meet the buyer and the buyer wouldn't return none of my calls. So what I did is I bought stock. I paid forty-four hundred dollars for stock, I went twenty-two for eleven, I bought four hundred shares for forty-four hundred dollars and I flew down and I met Sam Walton and I told Sam, I said, Sam, I got the same stuff as you're supposed to have on your shelves, a fifty cents a yard cheaper and this guy don't want to talk to me. And by the way, I'm a stock holder with a company. He said, come on in, son. I walked out of there with a million two and they fired the buyer, like this. Since then, I've been given, Sam Walton always told me, never change and give back. Since then, I've been given, Sam Walton always told me, never change and give back, I've been given my entire life, no matter what part it is, if it's the Board of Ed, if it's a charter school-
Okay.
If it's the social authority, if it's-
That's time.
Thank you.
All right. Jim Doyle.
As I said in my opening, I've been here for twenty-six years. I registered to vote immediately upon moving to Hoboken in nineteen eighty-seven. I, uh, why am I running? Uh, you know, I, after the summer of two thousand nine, uh, when Dawn Zimmer became our mayor, I had supported Dawn, but I had supported prior mayors and had been disappointed, so I was, you know, I, I was gonna wait and see how things went, and I was thrilled to see how things were going. That's why when I was asked if I would be, could be appointed to, uh, to, to, after the, the hospital mess started to rear its, its head, um, the gov- Governor Christie appointed me to the hospital management entity, and we worked through to get the hospital transferred and to keep the hospital, keep twelve hundred jobs, and to get, possibly most importantly, a fifty-two million dollar bond, uh, off the city of Hoboken taxpayers. As for council, city council meetings, I think Patricia and I are probably the only people who go to every single, I mean, in the room, not just in the, uh, on this dais, uh, go to every single city council meeting, but I can't say that I go to the county meetings. Patricia, so you got me there.
Robbie Baller.
I moved to, I moved to Hoboken almost fourteen years ago, and I've been registered to vote here, uh, pretty much the same amount of time. Um, obviously, I've, I've been to, uh, the coun- all the council meetings in the last four years, virtually all. Uh, and I'm just running again because, uh, after four years of serving in Hoboken with the mayor, I've seen how much he's done for Hoboken and how much we can do as a team if you have a mayor and council working together. And essentially, that's what this is about. We can't go back to the past, we need to move forward, and we need to take the last four years and continue that progress. If we don't have a city council that's working with the mayor, what's happening in Washington is gonna be what's happening in Hoboken. You're gonna have gridlock, we all already see that with an eight-member council. So the reason I'm running along with Councilman Doyle, excuse me, future Councilman Doyle, and, uh, Councilman Mello, is to make sure that we have the ability to advance the initiatives that we've advanced, uh, the last four years in the years ahead. Thank you.
Joe Mindak.
I moved to Hoboken in nineteen ninety-five, I said before, I'd never been to Hoboken before, my friends told me it was a good place to live, so I started my business at the same time, rent was only about five hundred dollars, so I was making just about enough to cover that, and, and Sullivan's had dollar drafts, so that was good. Since then, I took my business from about a hundred thousand dollars to three million dollars within about five years, and, and so I got that footing. I then started, um, H-Mag back in two thousand nine, another, uh, magazine in town to celebrate everything that's great about Hoboken. And I, I fell in love with this town, I met my wife here, we had our two kids at St. Mary's Hospital, uh, we walked to the hospital, um, and, uh, and I've loved this town ever since, and I got involved, uh, with the Hoboken Chamber of Commerce, I was on the committee for the, uh, retail and merchants committee, and also was on the Rotary, I was a Hoboken Rotaryarian of the Year in two thousand twelve. So I've done a lot in town, as I said before, and I wanna continue doing stuff in town. And I wanna help run the town like a business. I've, I've started businesses, I know how they run, and I know how to grow them, I wanna help grow Hoboken, I've done a lot of business here, and I've had a lot of trouble doing business here. I came to Hoboken to do a, a national photo shoot for a bass shoe campaign, uh, to be in GQ Lucky Magazine, and I've shot in Los Angeles downtown, I've shot in New York City, Brooklyn, and I came to Hoboken, and it was the hardest place I was ever, I had to do business in, and it was a shame, and, and actually lost a client after we shot here. And I was just trying to promote Hoboken as a place to come and do business, to have fashion shoes with all people here. So I really wanna help Hoboken become more of a business.
Peter Biancomano.
I've been a lifelong resident here in Hoboken, I registered to vote right after my eighteenth birthday, and it's a funny story because my brother's in attendance tonight, and he's three years older than me, and he registered to vote right after my eighteenth birthday. I wanna make sure everybody can fulfill their civic opportunities in that they have in this country and in this great state of New Jersey and this great town of Hoboken. And again, just to repeat while I'm running, my father owns a small business here for thirty-one years that bears my last name. As one of the veterans on the block and in the neighborhood and in town, he hears many complaints from different small business owners about how the city government is not assisting them. And usually those complaints come right to me, and I try to give as much insight as possible. And it just saddens me to see some businesses like Maxwell's leave after thirty-five years of service. Again, my father's been here thirty-one years, it could happen to my father as well. I would hope not, but it could. Um, and we need to protect our small businesses for this not to be turned into a chain store mini-mall, and that's exactly one of the biggest reasons why I'm running tonight, uh, why I'm running for city council, and I'm glad I could share that tonight. Thank you.
I guess we'll have rebuttals on people's personal stories. You, we have a rebuttal, okay.
I'm sorry, just a real quick one, I mean, because I advocate for the tenants and the residents of Hoboken, and it's kinda mind-boggling for Mr. Baller to make a statement saying that we're gonna be similar to Washington. I thought that already happened when Campbell Marsh tactic failed, and the council was four-four. I sat there many a nights, disturbed, disturbed me because I'm like, it's three o'clock in the morning, I gotta go home, I gotta get the kids up for school, and with the council working together, I hope he's not just saying that because it's the debate, and that's good, let's really work together as a team, because it affects the people when you see a four-four council that's going nowhere and to get garbage like this, and this is mind-boggling because the council tried to shut us up, and I got this off reliable website that Mr. Baller's team endorsed, and it bothers me to see them sit here tonight and say, we're gonna be like Washington, please, it's about working together, and I have to really disagree with him because these statements on this, uh, paper from Mr. Baller is really mind-boggling to the public. Thank you.
Any more? All right. I was handed this, it says, people need bio breaks, which I guess is because the word bathroom would be too crass and undignified, so bio breaks, so I guess we'll have a five-minute bathroom break and then reconvene as quickly as possible, so the intermission begins. We're back, good. Fran, let's hear for Francis, our timekeeper, everybody, let's hear for Francis. All right, so we'll, uh, back in action here. This, uh, next question is, is simple and yet profound, let's see. It is, what is the one thing you wish the city council had done differently in the last year, and what's one thing you think was a good decision made by the council in the last year? Something you don't like, something you do like by the city council, and we'll begin with Brittany Montgomery.
A good decision, I think, the council has been able to do is get the parks going, at least in the south. So, living down there, not having an area for the dogs and community, I think is really important, and I'm glad it's finally starting to take shape. A bad decision would be to not be able to rectify the parking decisions in Hoboken. Um, it's a mess, it's a very big stressful thing for the residents and the visitors and the business owners, so to see some kind of decision made to help everyone involved in that.
Frank Rambler. Something that you did like that the city council did, and something you did not like, or you wished they had done differently last year.
Okay, I looked at sixteen hundred park, and the field looks great when you go over the, the two bridges over there, but, uh, I would've done it a lot different. Uh, my thing that I follow now is whatever's taxpayer pay that should be used to its fullest potential. I think if you look at the need of either parking or gonna put a new parking, uh, garage underneath or, of city garage underneath, and that, that field should've been on top of the garage, something like they did in Union City, where they built the school and they built the field above. I think it was poor planning, I think it was just hush-hush for a while, and I just wanted to get some public relations out of it for this campaign. I look at Sinatra Field, I don't know when it's gonna be done, probably when I'm done gone. There's things that I got, I'm the chairman of hopes, I'm waiting to go back on Grand Streets in Sandy, they still don't cheap rock the walls. So there's a lot of different things going on that's not happening, people are not seeing it, but, you know, the, the good thing, yeah, they put a field up there to let the kids go and play, soccer, whatever game they're playing, but they didn't actually have good planning doing it. Thank you.
Jim Doyle.
One thing I wish the city council did is showed up to vote on the vacancy of Carol Marsh, uh, instead of staying home for three meetings-
No, no reaction, please.
But, uh, and also, I would add that the, uh, in all seriousness, the, the very last meeting, I think for mostly political reasons, uh, there was a, a ordinance for second reading that would've saved Hoboken taxpayers, it would've helped towards saving Hoboken taxpayers with, uh, flood insurance rates. Um, and they, it was not voted for, I think purely for timing reasons, because, for the fear that the mayor would, uh, have an accomplishment in the last weeks before the election. So that is something I wish they did. Um, as far as what I do like, I, too, will, will, uh, point to sixteen hundred park, but I think, um, with a more subtle, uh, nuance to that, the, the design for sixteen hundred park was different from the field as it has been built, and, uh, there was a great deal of, of desire on the part of everybody to get the park done ASAP, and it turns out that a group of very zealous, uh, park design people wished that it was different, including my wife, and the city council listened to them and changed the design, and it took more time, and frankly, had the election not been moved from November to May, they would've failed to get it in time, but they did the right thing, so that's what I'm glad they did.
David Mello.
Well, you know, when it comes to doing things differently, uh, politics and, um, elect- holding elected office is very much a team sport, and I was so proud of the quarterback of our team, Mayor Zimmer, when she led the administration to saving our hospital. That was a major win for this city that avoided our taxpayers having to be saddled with over sixty million dollars in debt service that would've come due almost immediately. The problem was that when it was handed off, the ball was handed off to myself and my city council colleagues, we weren't able to, I wasn't able to persuade and convince my colleagues to simply refinance a bond that had been outstanding on, on the hospital garage since the time it was built. It's been built in the time that many of us have lived here, it wasn't that long ago, and we simply needed to refinance it because we went from a, a public owner or a nonprofit owner to a private owner, and the, the law required it to be refinanced. Because that wasn't refinanced, we zeroed out our parking utility surplus, a surplus that was earmarked for things like potentially a new garage on the western part of town, for more shuttle buses on our hop system, which we've implemented, but we don't have enough shuttle buses on it currently, and a tremendous amount of things that it was earmarked to do. So that, I think, is something I wish we had done differently, I wish I could've been more persuasive to my colleagues. When it comes to good decisions, I am so glad, the very first thing I sponsored was moving the appointment of zoning board members to the city council's hands from the mayor's hands, because the day after we first considered that on the city council, we watched a mayor be walked off in handcuffs for violating and exploiting that power.
Laura Miani.
Thank you. Um, one thing that I wish had happened differently would be the timing and execution of the parks. Um, you know, we're working, we're working feverishly to get Sinatra open, renovating Elysian now, uh, trying to finish the renovations of Church Square now, I just wish it could've been staggered a little bit more. Uh, one thing that I think was good was, um, the fact that we did get the budget approved, and I think that, uh, people worked together to, uh, get that done so that we did not have revisit, uh, the state takeover that we'd had in the past. Thank you.
Joe Mindak.
I agree that the hospital was, uh, definitely a good thing that the council had done, that needed to be saved, um, so that was a good thing that, that happened. A couple things could've been done differently, uh, dealing with one buyer, I say one buyer is no buyer, when you're selling a business, buying a house, buy a home, one buyer is no buyer, so we should've been a little more diligent with looking at other buyers, but it got done and needed to be done, so that was good. Uh, the two things I, I think, uh, you know, paving Washington Street is a shame, the money was there, we couldn't agree, the council couldn't agree to get that done, I mean, the businesses are hurting, I, I talk to the businesses all the time, they're down sixty percent, seventy percent, I mean, they are hurting for business. Um, and parking, uh, i- it's not a hard thing to fix, and, and we keep booting, we keep, you know, making the parking hard, hard to figure out, people don't wanna come to town, they do not wanna come to Hoboken, they don't wanna come here to shop, they don't wanna come here to visit our kids, they just simply don't wanna come here, and it's a parking issue. The, the, the street looks like, this kid's here, the street doesn't look good, and, uh, it should've been paved, and the parking should be dealt with, that's a simple thing to, to put together. Uh, we should get rid of the boots, we should get rid of all that to get people to come to town again, they're not coming to town, that's hurting us.
Robbie Baller.
Uh, I have to, uh, agree with the, uh, the last speaker on one point, that being, you know, one thing that people always ask me is, why can't we just repave Washington Street? It's the centerpiece of Hoboken, and I think a failure of the council has been to, to appropriate the money through a bonding measure to pave Wash- Washington Street and make sure that it's also pedestrians, uh, friendly with traffic signals on, uh, on all the intersections so that you can walk safely and drive safely on that street. We have to work together as the city council, whether it's Wash- uh, repaving Washington Street, or something like hop buses, which were not funded, which they should've been funded, uh, but we had certain council members that would not fund, uh, the replacement of hop buses after Sandy, I think those were bad decisions. One of the, the things I'm most proud of, as Councilman Mello said, was the city council's role, uh, as, in saving the hospital. I was fortunate enough to be council president during that time, I remember that Sunday night in October, I believe, where we consummated or approved the consummation of the acquisition of the hospital, and, you know, several months later, my, my son was born at, uh, St. Mary's, and it was both a, a political, uh, moment as well as a personal moment for me, so I think it's a proud achievement of the, uh, city council.
Patricia Waiters.
First of all, let me thank whoever asked this question. Um, there's so much, I'd rather just say one thing, I can't even let it out loud, but the work on the rent control, tooth and nail, when you took office and you seen the problem there, fix it, that's what I, that's what I said. Stop avoiding dangerous things that you know that affect the residents, I would've worked on the rent control first. Um, the parking, horrible, three tow truck companies, three, and it impacted us, you should've never bought my car, because that's the first thing I'm gonna change. I'm getting rid of all the tow truck companies, I'm not that desperate for revenue, free parking on the weekends so people could come to our businesses. Trust me, I gotta get this city council seat. And, and the power-minded, power-streaking majority versus the minority, stop, work together as a team, I am totally against that, let's originate a caucus, where we can have a caucus, do business at the caucus, vote at the meeting, and give the meeting back to the public, like the Sunshine Meeting Law said. The meeting is for the public, and we like totally forgotten about, people get tired, the seniors get up and go home, sitting there till two and three in the morning is ridiculous. And if you know what you're doing in administration, especially when you have an assistant to the assistant to the assistant, you shouldn't be there till three o'clock in the morning handling city business. One thing I can say I like, the city council accepted the African-American flag, and I ask at each nationality, you raise the flag for that, ma.
Peter Biancomano.
I have to agree with many of the speakers here, one of the things that the city council did very well to approve is sixteen hundred park. It brings me great joy to see many children and adults playing on that field, and, um, it was a much-needed open space for this town. And then agreeing with others, um, I wish the city council could've come to a compromise in repaving Washington Street. As Mr. Baller said, this is our main artery here in Hoboken, and it certainly is affecting small businesses that people are going through kidney-jarring, uh, potholes, just trying to get from one block to another. And, um, I look forward to assisting those small businesses by creating parking laws that are fair to them in the future as well, so I just hope the city council could, uh, work in the future at protecting, uh, or creating new parking for our small businesses. Thank you so much.
Eduardo Gonzalez.
One of the things I think that the city council, uh, did that was positive in the past year, uh, was passing the budget. Uh, I'm glad that they were able to pass the budget, um, though if we start talking about what was in it, that might, that, that's, that's a different story. Um, in terms of something negative, i- it would be the, the boards, uh, we have vacancies on the zoning board, housing authority board, we have vacancies on several boards, and this has caused, uh, some businesses to, not businesses, but has caused, uh, businesses to kinda stop in, in Hoboken. Um, the vitriol that, that's happened on the city council between both sides i- is just unacceptable, and I'd make sure that as a city councilman, that I'll be able to reach across the aisle and be able to compromise, to sit down, and always have the lines of communication open so we can fill some of these boards and, and we can go back to, to good business.
I think that's everybody, you're right? Any rebuttals? All right. Moving on, uh, what is your stance on the Hoboken Housing Authority Vision 2020 Plan? And almost an identically raised question here, Hoboken Housing Authority. And almost an identically raised question here, Hoboken Housing Authority, 2020 Vision Plan. We begin with Robbie Balla.
The issue with the Vision 2020 Plan is that there is no actual plan. There's a marketing brochure, there's a conceptual design, there's a so-called vision, but there's no meat to the bones yet. And we cannot have rational discussions about how to address affordable housing in the vitriolic atmosphere of the city council, unfortunately, when we discuss the Vision 2020 Plan. I have two concerns about the Vision 2020 Plan. First, if I were to ever even adopt or agree with the plan, we need to have proper leadership to implement it. I don't think that leadership exists right now in the Hoboken Housing Authority, even if I were to agree with the Vision 2020 Plan. Secondly, I have a problem with segregating a large minority population of Latinos and African-Americans in one portion of the city, and furthering that segregation was simply upgrading the quality of the buildings. Another alternative to that vision, which I see as perpetuation of housing segregation, is integration of minority communities into the larger Hoboken population. You know, that's a discussion I would like to have, but we just can't have it in the setting of the city council meetings, because we're simply being yelled at and screamed at, and there's no constructive dialogue. So, you know, those are my feelings right now on this Vision 2020 Plan. Thank you.
Eduardo Gonzalez.
For Vision 2020, what came in front of the city council was Phase 1, which would have been 44 units of affordable housing for the residents of Hoboken. The plan itself, Vision 2020, is something that will bring jobs to the local economy. It will help improve the neighborhood, and it will help revitalize and rejuvenate that housing stock. A lot of those buildings were built in the late '40s and the '50s, and they're outdated. If we bring those buildings up to code, to all the new technology that we have, we'll be able to make those buildings sandy-proof. We all know that down there by the housing authority is where it floods the most. And those residents should have the newest or should have at least affordable housing. Mr. Balla mentions the integration, and that is what we're seeking. We're seeking to have the same number of units, which is about 806, and add a little bit more where you integrate them. If we want to put them somewhere else in town, I'm not sure how we would do that, being that that's the only space, that's federal land. If maybe, once I get on the city council, we can work with the housing authority, and if that is a possibility, we can work with other parts of the town. But Vision 2020, in terms of affordable housing and revitalizing and rejuvenating that housing stock, it's something that is desperately needed in this town.
Mr. Ramb.
As I mentioned before, I'm a proponent for affordable housing. I've built over 500 apartments throughout the state between senior and family housing. I will work with anybody, any group, any council to build affordable housing, of course, it's clearly a need in this town, and half the, I walk out of my house, I walk out of my house, and two questions are always asked of me. Is there any apartments? Or I need a job? Nobody's doing nothing about that, so I don't care who's the mayor, who's the council, I will work with you to help these people who need housing. You know, everybody knows a dog, a bike, and a park, but there are people who need food on the table, there are people who need a roof over them for their families, and nobody's saying nothing about that. So I just made it clear, I will work with anybody to get affordable housing to help these people. Thank you.
Joe Mindak.
Yeah, I've been to the housing authority, and there definitely needs to be upgrades to those buildings, if you've been through there. It's shameful that some of the buildings that we live in are so close and we're living in those, and these places aren't being upgraded. So I agree that something has to be upgraded. Phase 1 apparently is approved, and I've been to some of the council meetings, and they're not getting a shot at sitting down with the council to talk about it. I'm not sure why exactly that they can't get a forum to discuss it, but it seems to be just get to the table, talk about what Phase 1 is, see what is going on with that. There's apparently 10 phases, so let's get Phase 1 approved, but we need to sit down and discuss it and have a plan and review that plan. I know there's one online with 100 pages of all the different plans that's going on. Apparently, that's what's been approved. So I think we go ahead with that, and we need to do something with the housing.
Brittany Montgomery-Coke.
As councilman, I hope to help all residents of Hoboken, so I really believe that the residents in the housing authority deserve safe, upgraded housing. So I'd like to support and hopefully have more dialogue to help cultivate the Vision Plan.
David Mello.
When I became the Housing Authority Commissioner two springs ago, there was already a concept in place that would have more than doubled the size of our housing authority. And to me, that's put in the cart before the horse, because as I've been a commissioner, I have been let into a number of units where people have let me in with a caveat that I not go to our executive director for fear of reprisal, that they were turning in the poor condition of their units. I cannot give specific details about the condition of their units, but it is reprehensible. We have an executive director that, when he becomes an assemblyman, which he most likely will, will be making tens of thousands of dollars more than the governor of this state. He will be making about the same exact amount of money as the Vice President of the United States, and he will be making more than the Secretary of HUD for the entire nation. Yet he does not seem to know how to properly maintain a building. Are the buildings old? Yes. Do they need to be replaced? Probably. Are there many old buildings in the city of Hoboken? Yes. Have they been better maintained? Absolutely. I am not going to accept putting in the hands of an administration at the housing authority that has not properly maintained the buildings they have, a multi-multi-million-dollar building project that will bring developer fees in the multiple millions of dollars to that housing authority that I don't even think we're going to be properly accounted for. So we can replace the housing stock, but we can only do so when we have the proper management in place at our housing authority.
Peter Biancomano.
I believe that our Hoboken Housing Authority residents should have upgraded housing. But I believe that this issue has become very, very political and polarizing. I think we need to work in cooperation with our Hoboken Housing Authority Executive Director Carmelo Garcia and the mayor and the city council to make sure that the residents are treated fairly at the housing authority right now, and the residents of the surrounding community are treated fairly as well. Cooperation can lead to great progress down at the Hoboken Housing Authority. Thank you.
Laura Miani.
Hi. I, as with my fellow running mates, I've walked through the housing authority and I've seen the condition of those buildings. And they do definitely need to be, if not upgraded, then completely rebuilt. So I am very much in favor of doing what we can for affordable housing and, you know, upgrading these projects, just so that these people can, you know, live decent, at which, from the council meetings that I did attend on this issue, there clearly is a need. And I think that we would be remiss if we're not doing what we can now to plan for the future. Thank you.
Patricia Waiters.
Excuse me, I get a little emotional, because this is a sticky situation. I want to know first, what do the director's salary have to do with the living conditions in those poor people's apartments? Tons of people came in and packed City Hall and pleaded, "We don't want to live like this. We don't want the human in the elevator. We can't get heat for our babies at night. Roaches and mice run in apartments." We were stuck in apartments for 16 days with Hurricane Sandy. They pleaded for help. Put the politics aside, the Assembly Seat had a big thing to do with this. I don't care what the 2020, 2050, 60, 70 have to do with it. Let's keep the facts the facts. It has nothing to do with the way those people are living. They deserve the right to live decent too. And it breaks my heart, because I don't like the stereotypes, and I'm glad to see Mr. Balla admit that it's so segregated, and for years, it's been new people in that one little section, and it's so mind-boggling. When I first ran, they even stereotyped me and said, "Oh, Patricia, you live in the fourth ward?" It doesn't matter, because if I live in the fourth ward, I'm going to try to the best of my ability to keep my apartment up to par. But if you don't have the right resources to maintain an apartment from 1954, what are you going to do? Come on now, we don't need a rocket scientist. I will walk to Trenton, Washington, do whatever I have to do. But I should not have to skip the city council right here to get involved and do something about the way those people are living. Thank you.
Any, I believe that's all 10, right, everybody? Okay, any rebutts? Once again, I left off number 10. I tend to do that a lot. I know, it's a different person at least this time. Go ahead. Jim Doyle.
I am 100% in favor of improving the housing stock in the housing authority, and I think I speak for my running mates, everyone on city council, whether they want me to speak to them or not. I think everyone agrees with that. The question here is a credibility issue with regard to the director. And I have educated myself on the issue. I don't know that there's a whole lot of information out there. I was, or at least enough to, for such a, it's such a big step. Even though it is the first phase, when you start going down the road on a 10-phase project, it's one thing to say we only need 1/10 of the funding, but you're kind of committing to a multi-phase project. And I have an open mind. The director, actually, I spoke with him recently. I was disappointed, there was going to be a forum, an educational forum, on the Vision 2020 at the library on the 9th of October, and it didn't happen. I don't know why it didn't happen, but I was hoping for it to happen, so that when this question came up tonight, I would be able to be more educated on the question. But it's not a question of not wanting the housing stock to be improved, it's a question of credibility, I believe. Bye-bye.
Any rebutts? Ms. Waiters.
Director Garcia reached out, and you can watch him on 77, a numerous amount of times, and asked to come to forms. He gave forms in housing authority, he gave forms in 220, and he gave several forms to educate the people exactly what 2020 is about. I went on the computer, thanks to Ms. Margaret, too, and she gave me a stack of information, every single phrase. I made it available for the whole city council. That's still the need to say. The people suffer at the end. Your job as a public service is to accommodate the people, not the director. Go after the people. Take care of people first. They have to live that way. Put their head on those pillows at night. Thank you.